Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to start our meeting on Mr. Clerk. Please take roll call.
Dave Abdallah.
Uh-oh.
Dave Abdallah.
He's probably muted.
Here. Councilman Bazey.
Hold on a minute.
Here.
Councilman Constand. Absent. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Councilwoman Meladowski Maxwell.
Here.
Councilman Muscat.
Here.
Councilman Wenzel.
Here.
We have a Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Tonight, I'd like to have Councilwoman Wenzel lead us in the public legion. Councilwoman Wenzel?
I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, let's proceed it. Next, we have agenda approval. This is with the addition of a walk-on 9C, which is an engagement letter to the treasurer position.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to approve the order of business for May 26, 2020, electronically held regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. Virtual meeting including item 9C is submitted.
Second.
I get a support from Councilman Bazey. I got unmuted. Linda, let's keep everybody unmuted. All the council people, because we've got to vote.
Okay, I didn't mute anybody, but I will unmute them. There is council.
And council people, I'm going to tell you, please don't mute yourself while we're voting, because of the fact you can't unmute yourself with the way this meeting is set up this time. Okay. We're voting on agenda approval with the walk-on 9C. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. This is minutes from the electronically held regular meeting of May 12, 2020.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Abdallah?
I move that we approve the minutes from May 12, 2020, electronically held regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council, virtual meeting as outlined in item 4A.
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next.
Did we forget the pledge allegiance?
No.
No.
And Clerk, you got me here on.
Please don't speak out of order. We can not speak out of order, or I'm going to have to mute everybody. Okay. Next, we have public hearing and comment on agenda items. This is agenda items only. We limit it to two minutes. Does anyone in the audience have a comment on an agenda item for today's meeting?
We have Mr. Abdahak.
Yeah, unmute him, please.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I want to talk about fifteen, one, 1.5 million dollars, which the mayor and the treasurer are asking to allow him to borrow if needed in September, I believe.
Is this on today's agenda?
Yeah. Yeah, it is on the agenda.
Okay, which item number?
9A.
Oh, my God.
Interfund loans.
Yes, it didn't say, I didn't know, okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Looking at the numbers, I just want to know where this 1.5 million dollars came from. Is this a shortage in the forecast of the budget of last year? Or are we going to see more demand for more money because of what's going on in the country and the state? I would like, you know, the mayor to be as honest as possible with the resident in the city council. Any money he needs more, and he expect to take money from the library fund, we need to know ahead of time before anything is approved. And I thank you much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public on agenda items today? Raise your hand or on the system here. We'll let you speak.
I don't see anybody.
I'm not seeing anybody.
I don't see anybody.
Okay, at this time, we will move on to fund transfers and current claims.
I don't see any hands up.
Okay, we need somebody to approve fund transfers and current claims.
Council Chair.
Councilwoman Muscat?
I move City Council to approve 6-1 through 6-40 as outlined.
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Abdallah?
I had a couple of different questions on 6-5. And that's for, with, with fire. And I'm sorry, let me go to it here.
They have OP, OPCO, L O P.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a question on here. Why is that so much over budget? That's for the fire department, if you don't mind.
Okay, can we unmute the Chief Brogan, please?
Let me hear him.
Chief Brogan, would you like to answer that?
What?
Over the, but it was so far over the budgeted amount, is what I should say.
The, this was around the budget amount, 5,647?
Yeah.
On emergency reporting.
Before, before that, it says the amount budgeted for was 2,713.
Oh, is that the amount that's in contractual services? Maybe Linda, that may be the total amount that's in contractual services. So maybe, I'm going to do it. I didn't realize that contractual services was that low. We get a lot of bills towards the end of the year. This was one of them. From, from, that's for that entire line item. It wasn't for this specific thing. So that's like a $45,000 line item. That's, so I'm going to have to transfer money to make sure that's covered. And I'm going to have the same problem with medical supplies this, this year as well. So I was working on transfers extra earlier today.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Madam Chair, also for ordinance on 6-7. Jack, we got a property on Fairwoods. I just happen to know, being a real estate agent, that particular property was sold probably about two or three years ago. Is there a new, why are we restoring that? Is there a new house on that? What's, what's the situation with that? Why are we paying for that type of money?
We're not, what we're doing is we're paying Bell for, and then we're going to be submitting an invoice against that property. They had a very large hold. The project appears to be abandoned. We weren't able to get ahold of anybody that was taking responsibility for the job. I worked with Larry on this for a few days. There was a large hole in the backyard. It became a concern for several of the neighbors. So we had to order fencing and.
So they've started construction, never finished, is what you're saying?
Yeah, so we've had no luck getting ahold of the owner or the contractor. It sounds like the owner might have switched to a different contractor, but there's several people involved in that. But we needed to secure the property so that nobody injured themselves. So that will be a payment that will make to Bell for, for their services. But in return, I think it's already been applied against the property, so.
Okay. And then, I might be able to help you on that, Jack. So maybe call me tomorrow, I'll help you out on that one, getting ahold of the owner.
Okay.
Also on 6-27, we had for the Michigan Humane Society. There was a bill from April and a bill from, I'm sorry, from March and April, but then there's one for 11/20/19.
Yeah, we're not, we're not sure how they never get, we're not sure how that bill was never sent to us, but I worked with Nikki for about a week on that, researching it. And they did not send us a bill back in November. So that, we do own that money for services during that month. And they don't really have an explanation as to why that bill was.
From six months ago.
They never submitted the bill to us, so yeah. And if you notice, of the two others from March and April, the one is a little higher than normal. And that's because we had a hoarding case, an animal hoarding case. And there was a lot of animals that had to be dispositioned, several hundred animals. And so that's why there's an additional cost on that. And that too, will be seeking a retribution, you know, getting the cost back for that extra. It's going to involve a criminal case. And we'll ask for, you know, a judge to, to reimburse us for those ones that we had to use above what we normally would at the shelter.
Okay, thank you. And then one last quick one, Council Chair.
Sure.
On 6-31, the amounts that I'm looking at, it, it looks like, and I just want to make sure it's not, if it's a typo or not. This would be for John Selmy, Director Selmy. The amount budgeted before payment says there's a negative. I hope we're not in the hole that much. Or maybe the controller can answer that, I'm not sure. But it says minus 55,751 and 11 cents. Can I get a clarification on that, please? It might be the controller question, probably, more than.
Is John there?
I'm looking, I think there's usually two for John, so.
John Selmy, or who are we looking for?
I just unmuted A. John Selmy, but usually he's in here twice. There he is.
I'm on, I'm on, yeah, I'm here. So that pipe tech, that is a little bit over budget. We will have to do some transfer in there within the fund, mainly due to a lot of more extensive sewer work, a lot of grease complaints, issues that we've been addressing that has been more labor intensive, more than what was anticipated in the budgeted amount. So that's the reason for that. And there's been some emergency calls where they, they charge by the hour too, and some, some issues that we've been having.
Okay, so the amount is $55,000 then, based on that, almost $56,000 over budget. Quite honestly, John, it's a little concerning for me. If, I don't know if we're just not budgeting enough. I mean, I know you said there's some emergencies, but still, as I recall, I don't recall the exact number, but it's pretty high up there. And we're still short about 56,000?
Oh, shoot.
That, that's the budgeted number. That's, that's what today, I mean, I don't, can ask Linda about that, but I mean, if it's showing that it's over, I mean, I can try to get to that screen, but. Yeah, we would, we definitely do need to upgrade our, the sewer budget, that, for that cleaning portion of that. The amount of work that they're doing and the amount of issues that they're finding and, and, and addressing correctly, especially on the grease side. You know, I don't know what happened in the past, but it wasn't being done the way it is now. So when they find a pipe that has grease in it, they go in there, they try to camera it to see what it is. If they can't, they go in there, they cut all the grease out of there. They go in there, come behind it, put a solution in there, and then they camera. And then they monitor, monitor that going forward every three to four months to get this grease issue under control. So I wouldn't have a problem recommending that we bump that lineup when we talk about the water and sewer budget.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilwoman Muscat?
You're welcome.
Just to piggyback on something Councilman Abdallah said. I had contacted Controller Vance. There was actually three invoices, 610, 623, and 631, that had negative budgets. She explained to me what she was doing. But I'm, you know, we had to pay these bills. And I'm just afraid we're, we're paying them and there's a negative amount in the, in that particular account. But I think she was, her explanation to me was satisfactory.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
I also have some concerns what the previous councilmen brought up. There's some items like what, I mean, I don't want to re, re-agitate what was discussed already, but they say, for example, 6-3, it's, that's the thing that stood out. That this is coming out of the water fund. And it shows there's only $10,752 in that account. I don't know which account that is. I don't know how many different accounts for the water fund. But it shows that there's only $10,752 in that particular account, 592536, total 802-000. The invoice is for $11,033, but it shows that in that account, there's $10,752.70. So, I mean, that's, yeah, so can, can you answer that question first? And I have a couple of other comments.
And who's the question for?
The controller. It's, I just need to find out.
The answer's on mute, go ahead.
Okay, so yeah, I mean, this is a, it's what was in the budget, what was anticipated at that time, without looking at the whole activity for dues and memberships. I can't tell you why it's over. Sometimes those memberships are based off of water flow for this one in particular. So that amount, it was an estimate when we did the budget, and now it's come in a little higher. But at this time of the year, it's very common for certain lines to go over. And that's when I do the adjustments. But for the most part, within their departments, like the fire department and whatnot, they're probably not over budget as a whole in their department. Something else is less, that will compensate for, like Dave Brogan has extra medical right now. That's why that J and B Medical is over. But, you know, due to what's going on now, I'm assuming that's what's putting his medical supplies budget over a little bit, because there's extra supplies he's purchasing. But when we do the amendments, you'll see, you know, within the departments, what needs to be done.
Yeah, I was going to ask you about the amendment, but before I get there.
It'll be the next meeting. I'm trying to get it together right now for the next meeting, because I have to have it approved by the end of the year to have the balanced budget.
So since you're on that topic for amendment, that was my third comment. So, so you're going to submit the amendments to tell us exactly how much money is left over? How much was overspent for each particular account?
Well, yeah, so what I do for budget amendments is I look at the accounts and see if I need to make adjustments typically by the department. If the whole department as a whole is well within its budget, I might not do an amendment for a particular line. And as long as the general fund budget as a whole, there's excess revenue over expenditures, we're good. So, but I do try to adjust within, within the departments.
Yeah. One of the other questions that I have, I know some of the counts is way off. I mean, just to give you another example, and this is my last item. 6-4, it has uniforms for the, for the police. And I don't know if Chief Petrie, or maybe, I don't know, the previous chief. I don't know, we have two different chiefs, you know, for this budget year. So I don't know why we had that much, $90,000 left. I mean, at this point, we're in May, end of May. So we have $90,000 left. And the invoice for that particular one is 1, 1,746. Is there, is there a reason for that, why it was way over?
Okay. Is this for Chief?
Let me get.
Yeah, because that, that'll be the same with the fire department. For you, that are the uniform allowance that's given to the firefighters and the police officers is paid at the very last day of the year. And so that, that's why that one line has that much in it. It's 2% of the salaries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Okay, is there any further questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is reports from Mayor. This is for the Van Born Corridor Improvement Overlay District Professional Services proposal. It fails. Motion fails. Next item on the agenda is reports from city officials. This is Treasurer Riley, interfund loans. Am I getting support?
Council Chair.
Chair.
Councilwoman Wenzel?
Yeah, um, every, on the last one, I was, I went blank for a minute. I was going to allow the mayor to speak on the Van Born Corridor. But I couldn't, my screen went blank and then everything froze. I don't know if it's doing that to everyone else right now or not.
Let me go back and readdress it. I have Councilman Constand, are you with us?
Yes, I, I'm on, okay, I'm unmuted now, but Councilman Wenzel, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead. Okay. I'm going to go back and revisit this in case somebody had problems. On reports from Mayor, Van Born Corridor Improvement Overlay District Professional Services proposal.
Madam Chair.
This is support, Councilwoman Wenzel?
Yes.
Okay, motion, go ahead.
Make the motion.
Make the motion.
Who, who, me?
Is that a receipt?
Councilwoman Wenzel has his hand up. Make the motion, Councilwoman Wenzel, if you want to support it. Councilwoman Wenzel?
Cut, cut.
Councilwoman Wenzel, can you hear me?
Yeah, I little, I can hear, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, we're waiting for you to make the motion.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion to, for the mayor, well, I'm sorry, now. Hold on for just a second. The motion for the mayor's report for Van Born Corridor.
So that's for the Van Born Corridor Improvement Overlay District Professional Services?
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, yes.
Okay, do I hear support?
Support. Support.
Support.
Who has the support?
I'm sorry, Councilman Constand? I have no idea, but Councilman Constand, are you going to be with us today? You keep leaving your position.
Yeah, no, I wanted to support Councilman Wenzel's motion. And then it's a received note and file, correct? No.
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 No, it's not.
No.
So are you supporting that, Councilman Constand?
I am.
Okay. Any discussion?
Council Chair.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Muscat?
The mayor's going wild trying to wave his hand. And then I still do have a comment about this.
Okay.
Let me find him.
Secretary, can you unmute him?
I'm, there he is, I just found him, I got him.
We got a couple pages here, so it's hard to watch, everybody.
I did unmute him, so there we go.
Okay. Yeah. This is the joint arrangement with the city of Taylor. We have a lot of progress that's going. They're asking, and we would need, that we would pay one half of the services bill up to this point, which would be 17,400. There is a lot of, a lot of support from Tifa. They may actually join with us. And, and I don't want to speak for them, but they may very well make the contribution and reimburse the city. But this is going to be an exciting program. And a lot of our residents in the South End are working on this. And I'm just so excited about it. I would hope the council would be supportive.
Okay, um, do we have a, for sure? Can we pay, pay for, or are we just speculating they might be paying for it? Mayor? If we've lost.
Oh, wait a minute, I got to unmute him again.
Yes. Mayor?
And then Councilman Muscat has his.
I got him, yes, I know he's next.
Okay, okay.
Okay, am I back?
Yes.
Yeah, the, the Tifa is, is planning on making a huge contribution towards this project. So, but I had, because of the virus and stuff, I haven't gone back and, and talked to them. But all, just about all their members are in the committee that is working with the Taylor people to pull this off. So they're, they've been very, very supportive and are actually looking at more than putting, more than just this matching cost, but will be instrumental in moving this entire project forward.
Should we delay this to another meeting, so we know exactly how much we're paying and how much they're paying? If they're going to be, you know, contributing?
I would hope, I would hope we would, if necessary, pay the entire 17,000. This project is going to bring millions of dollars to Taylor and Dearborn Heights. And we need to get the proper committee so that we can go for grants and apply for others. Like, we're making outreaches to Ford Motor Company, to Masco, to some of the larger businesses along Van Born. But if you don't start this process and allow us to have a recognized committee, and under state law, a joint program, you're not going to get a penny.
Who's not going to get a penny?
The city of Taylor, Dearborn Heights. You got to have a committee together, show the joint cooperation between the two cities. That's what this is all about.
Okay, okay, yeah, because I was kind of lost here. All right, um.
Madam?
Madam Chair.
I have the Councilman, um, Muscat, and Councilwoman Abdallah, and Councilman Bazey. Or head Councilwoman Muscat.
You know, I, you know, as exciting as this sounds, I, I'm cautious about it. Because we've been talking, you know, we've heard about this now for a couple of years. We've already given money to, to set up a, a study on what things are going to look like and how much it's going to cost. And then we haven't heard a doggone thing about this since. This is the first thing I've heard about this in over a year. And, and we throw money at studies after study after study, and I've seen nothing happen. Nothing, absolutely nothing. No, no communication to us, and then they're doing this and doing that. And we're talking here, and we're talking there. Nobody communicates with me. I don't know how anyone expects us to vote for something when it's just brought up in the last minute again. So that, that's my concern, that, you know, and with the cost of this going on to be, you know, it's first it started at 600 or 700,000 dollars a mile, to a million dollars a mile. Now it's a million and a half to $2 million a mile. I don't know what this is going to be. We're going to throw good money after bad, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Do we have Councilman Abdallah?
Council Chair, just want to say, I'm honestly kind of disappointed in this particular project, because this thing started, as I recall, either 2017 or 2016. And I, I know a lot of us as council people are all excited about it. And I know a lot of the residents were excited about it. And I'm kind of disappointed that here we are, four years later. And I know they had a little situation with the mayor, without getting into the details in Taylor. And I know we've had, most recently, last couple of months, the COVID situation. But honestly, with all due respect to everybody, that's not, that's inexcusable to not be much, much, much further ahead in this thing four years later. And as far as some of the plans at the time, and I was a part, I went to the, you know, the meetings that we had for the city with the, at the, I'm blanking out where it was. Oh, that, that center, Richard Young Center. And I was over there. And we did all kinds of studies and questions and presentations and the whole nine yards. And here we are, four and a half years later. And now we have Wade Trim looking at, looking into this thing a little bit further. During this COVID crisis in China, they built a whole hospital within two weeks. I know this thing's not going to be done in two weeks, but to be four years later and nothing's been done? With due respect to whoever's responsible for this, it's disappointing to say the least. Thank you.
Thank you. I next, I have.
Madam Chair.
I have Councilman Bazey, then Councilman Constand. Or head Councilman Bazey.
Thank you. I also have the same concerns. We, we sat twice in our council chambers, and we discussed this about two and a half years ago. And I'm, I can't remember the amount that we paid at the time to do the same study session, or, or same study on a particular area. And, you know, we were excited about it. And then, like, as mentioned, as Councilman Muscat mentioned, it disappeared. And so I'm not comfortable with this again. Now it's coming back again. And now we're paying another source to do the study, to have some meetings. We're paying, I mean, that's a lot of money to have somebody tell us, okay, you know, we're going to do some meetings, we're going to be in meetings, we're going to put some committee. We're planning on having four meetings, I'm planning commission and two meetings. I don't know why we're paying that much money for people to go to meetings. I don't know why the city, and I don't agree with, have to get a third, third company to actually come in and to get two cities to sit together and talk about this project. It doesn't make sense to me that we're paying a company to come in and to get both Taylor and Dearborn Heights to say, okay, this is what we need to do. It doesn't make sense to me why we're paying this. I think this, this money is a waste.
Thank you, Councilman Bazey. Naturally, we have Councilman Constand.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I'd need to know through the chair, how much we've paid Wade Trim thus far? I believe it's 64,000. How much will Tifa pay? And I believe that Tifa would be able to pay the 17,000. What has Taylor paid so far? And then exactly what action we need to take on this? What, exactly what action the, the mayor's office wants from the council? On 8A.
Can you hear us, Mayor?
There he is.
You want me to respond?
Yes, he's asking you a question through the meeting.
Okay, I, I can't tell if I'm muted or not, so I assume you can hear me.
Yeah, we're muted you, because you were part of this discussion.
Okay. What you are paying for and what the next step is, is the ordinances of Taylor and Dearborn Heights along Van Born Corridor are going to mimic one another. So consequently, the development and the zoning is going to be parallel. So both communities are working together. We want to. We wanna get all the street signs similar, we would like to do some banners to give it a particular identity, and, and, but the key is gonna be that, uh, and Wade Trim is both, has a relationship with Taylor and Dearborn Heights. So what you will be getting in a very, probably, I, you would have probably gotten it by now, but because of the virus, they've not been able to do it, is the rewrite of our ordinances, and the Taylor council's gonna get a rewrite of their ordinances for Van Born to get, so that we can work towards a development along that pathway. A lot of the money, and what both communities are gonna opt for, is we're gonna, with this authority, we're gonna go back to the state of Michigan, we're gonna go back to Wayne County, and say, we need this street upgraded and developed, and we have two communities working together. We would expect that we would get priority as we redo the particular Van Born corridor from Southfield to Inkster Road. And so, in order to go after grants, and to go after, uh, as I indicated, two major corporations that have indicated the willingness, uh, to this extent, we've actually invited the Ford Motor Company people to be part of the committee, and it's an effort to draw them in, to get some financial support, and to really do this in the right way. But the, the next key component is all ready to start. Please don't kill this project as it's moving along. It has been slower than I would have liked, there are some reasons for that. If, if you have doubts and want us to bring, uh, Wade Trim in, I'm more than, um, willing to do that. I don't have any questions about doing it, but I'm gonna tell you, I think this is gonna be such a, uh, uh, stimulus for the South End residents of Dearborn Heights. I think you're looking foolishly if you don't support this.
Next we have Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, and I want to ex, express my concerns as well. We've been talking about the Van Born corridor for several years now, uh, prior to two thousand seventeen, and my concern is the transparency of this, as Councilman Moskett had, uh, mentioned, as well as Councilman Bazzie, the updates with the lack of reporting from the steering committee. I feel like we need an accurate reporting, and the zoning issues, I know, respectfully, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned zoning, that has to be addressed before any of this can be done, because otherwise, what's the point of putting all this money into, and putting up banners and all this, you know, great, um, what we call curbside appeal, when we have a line of used car lots? Now, we have the moratorium, but the moratorium is expiring in July, and without fixing that, you're not fixing the problem, in my opinion. So I, I mean, I wanna see the corridor improved, I've been saying that for many, many years. Um, some of us have, have said we're not approving of these used car lots, but they continue to come before us. Um, so I have the zoning concerns, and you mentioned the ordinance, I feel like that needs to be addressed first, thank you.
Thank you, oh, Councilman Moskett, and then we're gonna move on, go ahead.
Uh, uh, you know, I don't wanna kill this project either, but again, the lack of communication that's going on. Now, I'm reading this, and there's got nothing in here on what, uh, Wade Trim's gonna do, what, what the mayor just said they were gonna do, nothing in there about that. And, uh, i- i- improved maintenance and current landscape features. We did that th- three years ago, increased code enforcement for property owners. We, we should be doing that all along anyway. Planting new trees and additional landscaping, we had all of those pictures and everything. It's like we're paying money over and over again. Uh, Wade Trim already done some of this work, and, and yet I got no reports on it. I want this to go through for the South End, but i- i- it's like, you know, hey, give me seventeen thousand, again, for something I've already done.
Councilman, we have Mr. Brooks wants to answer your question, go ahead.
All right, um, like the letter said, the, the first part of the letter, and the, the main focus of the, um, effort is to work on zoning and, and getting a common, uh, overlay district, so both communities can have the same look, all right? And then through this, we'll have public engagement with the series of meetings. But this isn't really the next step, and I do apologize, it did take a while to get, you know, this together with Taylor, and get it to, to the, to the council. The items that, uh, Councilman Moskett was talking about, in terms of, uh, improved maintenance, and, um, it's on the second page, these are things that are, that are come, that came out of the first study, and these are things that can be done now, it's not part of this effort. It's just a reminder that these things can be worked on concurrently with trying to get the overlay district, together, uh, for the two communities.
I, I, uh, Council Chair, let me continue here, uh, you know, it, it's, again, I don't, you know, with, with the current situation, with what's going on in Washington and, and the Corvet, I don't know where we're gonna get a million, that million and a half dollars per mile from. This is the other thing, we're, we're gonna throw money at a study and then find out, hey, we can't afford to do it. That's a lot of money, from, from Southfield to Inkster Road is not one mile, it's a lot of miles, so...
It's, it's not a study, it is really, the focus is get the, uh, ordinances in line with both communities, get an overlay district.
Take to fruition, then what happens?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
If it, if, if it doesn't come out, because it costs too much money to do it at a, at, at a million and a half dollars a mile, then we've lost money for the studies.
Well, y- you're not losing the effort that, to get an overlay district, so, so as development occurs, you know, they'll start having the same facade, the same look, okay? The road, may take a while to get the road to improve, but then the corridor will start having a character. That, that's what the main emphasis on this proposal is. Start giving the char, the, uh, the, the corridor a, a character as you drive down.
Thank you, Councilman Wenzel, and then Councilman.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I recommend we table this and collectively get our questions together, and, uh, to, to the mayor, and, uh, to, uh, Mr. Brooks, and all parties concerned, and adjust this at a, a, a very, very soon upcoming meeting.
Do I do it as a study session before the next meeting?
Uh, Madam Chair, he made the motion, so he can amend the motion to, uh, to move it to a study session.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to make, I'd like, I'd like to have this moved to a study session.
I support that, support.
Okay, we're moving it to a study session, let's move on.
Vote.
Madam Chair, who was the, who was, who was the second on that?
Uh, Councilman Bazzie.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Move to a study session. Next item on the agenda is report from City official, Treasurer Riley, inter fund loans.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Treasurer John Riley, requesting City Council authorize the treasurer to enact inter fund loans if needed at an interest rate of point seven five percent per annum, between the fund listed below and the general fund at a maximum loan amounts listed. Water Enterprise Fund, one point five million. It is that, that any loan shall be repaid with interest by the general fund on or before September fifteenth, two thousand twenty, as he had provided us with a study session on May the thirteenth, as outlined in item nine A.
Support.
For by Councilman Coniston, is there any discussion we have? Um, I have Treasurer Riley here, let me unmute him.
You have? You got him?
Okay, go ahead, I had it, now it went back mute again, I'll do it.
Okay, I just did it, so, I think it takes a little while.
Nope, hold on, let me do it.
Okay, I'm not gonna touch it.
We keep going.
There he goes, nope.
Okay, I think I'm in.
We're in.
Hello?
There he is.
Yes, I'm just following up, so we had the study on, on May thirteenth that talked about the cash flow. Um, as in the last three years, we do not anticipate having to use this. This is just a, um, kind of be prepared if something for unforeseen happened. Um, I'm, I'm glad to say that the cash flow has improved since I, uh, met with the council on the thirteenth of May. Uh, that was because the numbers that I provided, the city council, were very conservative, and as we continue to process the cash since then, um, it, things have, uh, turned in our favor. Again, looking that there will not be a need for any inter fund loans, but I would still appreciate the, um, this motion to pass and for, to be prepared if something were to be needed. But it doesn't, it doesn't look like it will now. And then also that, you can see that the interest rate of point seven five percent is a very competitive rate, and so the water fund will, will not be harmed at all. It, it will actually, um, you know, be a very good investment for them to let the city use the money for the sixty or ninety days if needed, again, which is not anticipated to be needed, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Um, I have Councilman Moskett first, and Councilman Coniston, and Councilman Bazzie, go ahead.
I, I wanna make more of a statement and then a question. Uh, we approved this, I mean, two weeks ago, we were saying that we didn't foresee, and today, we don't foresee us using the money, so why not come to us then, if we do need the money, for the, the borrowing of the fund? And, and, you know, and I, I went back through some of the, the books, and, you know, Plant Moran, uh, in, in eighteen nineteen, we had unassigned balances of four million eight hundred and two thousand five hundred and forty dollars.
Unassigned balances are not cash, Councilman, I just, I, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but...
No, that's okay, that's okay.
Unassigned balance is not cash balance, okay? And then some of the cash that comes in, um, comes in, like, like the, uh, large amount from Wayne County that I, uh, highlighted during the cash flow discussion, you know, that comes in right at the end of June. And if, if for some reason that gets held up, and we don't get the million dollars, then we may need it. So what, the reason why I asked for this ahead of time is that, otherwise, you would have to call an emergency council meeting, you'd have to approve, you know, a cash flow and all this, this is just to have us be prepared if it's needed. It's not anticipated to be needed, but again, I don't control that million dollars coming in from Wayne County, that's coming in right at, towards the end of the June, at the end of our year.
Okay, thank you. Uh... Councilman, um, we have next, we have Councilman Coniston, and then Councilman Bazzie, go ahead, Councilman Coniston.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through the chair, um, Treasurer Riley, if you might explain what the, uh, alternatives might be if, for example, we don't get our payment from Wayne County making us whole for our unpaid taxes, and then what happens if the city bounces checks or doesn't meet the, the city's obligations? What the, those costs will be?
Well, we, we would hope that wouldn't happen, or it wouldn't have un, you know, like, unfunded payroll or anything like that, and that's just the, the way to be prepared, and that's the way I explained it at the, uh, cash flow study session, it was kind of like belt and suspenders, us just being prepared. Um, you know, again, it's in the council's hand, uh, I asked the council at that study session, do you want me to go ahead and put this on for approval? And, uh, you know, members of the council said, yeah, we should be prepared, you know, it's up to you guys to vote.
And I might add, it's, you know, we, we often talk about water, and, but the, the reason why the water fund is flush with cash is those bills are paid monthly, so that's a, a continuous item not, uh, uh, affected like other funds are, you know, that money should be coming in every month, correct?
Well, the water fund does come in, uh, you know, continuously. As again, right now, the water fund is a little high, uh, there's been discussion, and I know there's some meetings planned in the future, talking about replacing the meters, doing the CSO replacements that still need to be done, and there's gonna be some serious borrowing that needs to be done, and then you're going to whittle down that CSO surplus to pay for the bonding, to pay for the CSO projects that are federally mandated. Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, next we have Councilman Bazzie.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Council Chair, yeah, I'm not comfortable voting for this, and the reason why is, uh, uh, obviously, you know, uh, you know, I know we've done this in the past, you know, I asked that question, I know several council members asked that question last, at the last meeting for the budget, and we were told that we're in good shape, and, uh, there was no, uh, there was no reduced, uh, uh, spending or, or money coming into us, uh, there was a little bit of adjustment for the budget, but we're still hovering about fifty million dollars. Um, I'm, I'm not really comfortable right now of, uh, you know, even signing off on this, trying to get the one point five million dollar loan from the water department. I think if we need it, since now we're meeting periodically, you know, and stuff has been, I mean, every two weeks we're meeting, and obvious, we've had some, several meetings also, uh, on other, other topics. We can put this on, and within two weeks, we can get it approved, I don't know why we have to put that on the agenda. I'm not comfortable voting for this today, that's, that's one of the reasons why I'm voting against this.
Um, Treasurer Riley, is there a deadline we need to approve this by?
No, it, this is just to be prepared, is that the year end, which is June thirtieth? If we don't get the money from Wayne County, as discussed, we had, we had a cash flow discussion on May thirteenth, and I, I don't, we called Councilman Bazzie bringing up his concerns at that, and I asked the council, do you want me to put this on? That, and you guys said yes, so I put it on. So you, you guys go ahead and make your decision, and, um, you can do however you wanna handle it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Council Chair. My question, you know, there's concern, or why is there concern with Wayne County getting that money to us? I mean, how many times in the past, say, ten years have they been late?
One time, and that was during the Great Recession. At the time, you know, um, you know, I didn't know, uh, the, the fixed income markets were, uh, acting a little squirrely as the COVID nineteen, um, started, and so I had, uh, concerns. They, they filled me and say that possibly the things are looking good. Um, so I, you know, it is most likely gonna happen, you know, but, so you guys, uh, go ahead and make the decision. But I, I, I just, again, it did, it did happen once, and so, to me, once is, is more than enough to be prepared for.
Sure, and may I, may I ask a follow-up question, Madam Chair?
Sure, go ahead, Councilwoman.
So with that, you know, the one time, and certainly under the circumstances of that period of time, what's going on now, has Wayne County given you any indication that now there might be a delinquency in getting that money to the city of Dearborn Heights?
In fact, when I called them, they said things were on schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Abdullah?
I, I just had a question for the treasurer, and, and, and again, I just wanna get a clarification. And, and I understand where you come from, and I know we had it in the study session, but what really is the problem? And I, and this is not to blame you or anything like that, I'm just trying to get a clarification. If you contacted us and we had, at the worst case scenario, an emergency meeting, if not, just a regular meeting, and we voted on this, let's just say hypothetically, you decided this tomorrow, and then ten days or twelve, thirteen days later, we make a decision on it and we approve it, would that cause any type of problem for you?
Oh, no, not at all, but I guess, it's just like, the last three years, you guys have approved it, and we had this in our back pockets, and for three years, we haven't used it, you know? So it would be the same way of, again, this year, if you guys approve it, we have it in our back pocket, that we're not gonna run and use the money, it's not beneficial for the general fund to use the money if they don't need it, it's just being prepared. And that was the reason we were playing with the study session.
Yeah, but my concern has been about a lot of money, uh, I don't wanna say consistently, but it's happened multiple times over the years, where they take money out of the water budget, okay, which has a lot...
Nothing to do with that, Councilman, we haven't done this in three years, we have not, if you recall the, the cash flow discussion that we had on May thirteenth, we have not used any water funds to, to, to loan to general fund in the last three years.
Right, but previous to that, it had happened.
It's not anticipated for this year, so we had the discussion, I asked the council, would you like me to put this on for us to be prepared? And, and, and people said yes, so I put it on. It's up to you guys to, to vote, if you want us to be prepared with it now, or me to come, possibly whoever, come rushing back if they need it later. It doesn't look like, as it was said in the cash flow discussion, that there's gonna be a need for it.
Welcome, thank you.
If I understand correctly, Treasurer Riley, we're just being proactive instead of reactive at the last minute. And I know how all the council people hate being pushed at the last minute to make a decision, so I, I, am I correct in your saying?
Yes.
We probably, we haven't touched it anyways in years.
Right, in, in, in years, so...
Okay, all right, at this time, okay, as all the council people, Councilman Moskett, you mute, you muted yourself, we're gonna be taking a vote, hold on, we unmute you.
Here he goes.
Go ahead.
Madam, he's good now.
Looking to see if all the council... All right, at this time, this, we are voting on Treasurer Riley, inter fund loans, all those... All right, at this time, this we are voting on Treasure Riley, inter fund loans. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Oh.
Let's take a poll on this.
Thank you.
Councilman Coniston.
Yes.
Councilman Muscat.
No.
Councilman um Bazzi.
No.
Councilman Abdullah.
No.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
No.
Councilman Wenzel.
Yes.
Melanowski Maxwell, no, it fails.
Madam Chair, I you what I'm disappointed about was I asked at the cash flow meeting if you wanted to put this on. And then you voted down, which is a very foolish looking. Uh we had a discussion on the study session, which isn't on the public. You didn't, you could have said, no, Treasure Riley, do this later. But then you put it on here and then you voted down. It seems a little ridiculous to me. Or you could you could you could have easily said to me, no, don't do it. It doesn't make sense to be proactive, but to come rushing back at the last minute. Okay? That's why I brought it to a study session and we had that discussion. So I'm very disappointed in the city council of doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Treasure Riley's city deposit depositories.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Treasurer, City Treasurer John Riley submitting for our concurrence a list of financial institutions which shall be formally recognized as depositories for the city funds. And he has reviewed independent ratings of each depository and have found them all to be sound for short term investments. And institutions are J P Morgan Chase Bank, Comerica Bank, Dearborn Federal Savings Bank, Flagstar Bank, and Morgan Stanley. And he is requesting that our council authorize the mayor, clerk, and controller, and the new treasurer to sign all necessary documents for the financial institutions after they have approved by after they have been approved by Corporation Council Miyake is on item nine B.
Support.
For Mr. Muscat, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I have it. Next item on the agenda is nomination for city treasurer appointment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Uh I move that the city council appoint Robert Coniston to the position of treasurer.
Support.
For my Councilman Abdullah, is there any other nominations?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazzi.
I move that council appoint Mr. Zuhair Abdalhaq for city treasurer.
I second the motion.
Okay, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Okay, um anyone else? Okay, at this time, we will take a vote. Um and Councilman Coniston, I'm sorry, but you can't be a part of this because you are part of the vote. I'm going to mute you this time. Okay, at this time, Councilman Bazzi, who do you vote for out of the two?
Mr. Zuhair Abdalhaq.
Okay, Councilman um Abdullah.
Robert Coniston.
Okay, Councilman Mustam. Mustam?
Robert Coniston.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Mr. Abdalhaq.
Okay, Councilman Wenzel.
Zuhair Abdalhaq.
Okay, and Melanowski Maxwell votes for Zuhair also. So congratulations, Mr. Zuhair Abdalhaq. You will be the temporary replacement until the election.
Thank you very much for your confidence in me. And I hope I will work with everybody, including the mayor, including Ms. Vince, to make the treasurer department, you know, as good as Mr. Riley used to do.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Muscat, did you have a question?
I just a comment. Uh congratulations, Mr. Abdalhaq. But again, we're going to have another change in in November. And I was hoping that the council would appoint someone who has a possibility of continuing to do the job. And he would be tutel- uh tutelage of John Riley in the next few months. But again, congratulations, Mr. Abdalhaq.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have um co- corporate Council Miyaki. Go ahead, please.
Yes, I just want to make sure that everyone realizes that Treasure Riley still needs to submit his resignation.
He was supposed to state that tonight. He gave me his word.
Yeah.
Well, if you look at this, this is this is to fill the vacancy created by city treasurer Riley's pending retirement. So it does state that in this letter.
Okay, all right. Well, I just, it it would have been preferable to have ended up doing it with Treasure Riley doing things so that his
Madam Chair.
Position was vacant.
Go ahead, Treasure Riley.
Yes, I submitted to the clerk's office uh this evening um a resignation letter from the appointment to the city treasurer. And that will take effect June twenty ninth. And so that will be my last day as the treasurer will be June twenty ninth.
And if I if I if I may, if you could accept that, maybe add it to the agenda today and just accept it, it would probably be the best way in which to affect this appointment of Mr. Abdalhaq.
How would we add it after we've already approved the agenda? We would have had to walk it on at the beginning. And I didn't know. I talked to Treasure Riley and he told me he would get it to us. Um because I would have some concerns about putting this on this meeting too. You know, Treasure, me and you did speak on this, correct?
Yes, we did. We spoke last week.
Yes, and you were quite upset because we didn't have the um nomination for city treasurer appointment on there. So I told you I would put it on there as long as you would support me in stating, and what you have done. That you have the you will, it's upon his his um pending retirement. So it does cover it in the letter we've got here.
We have a meeting in June also, the second week, so we can put it on the agenda.
Okay, we got Councilman Wenzel.
Yes, can we get the specifics on the uh the appointment, the the starting and ending date, please?
The starting date will be after the election upon um, what is the wording? Come um clerk, we we thought, we talked about that earlier. Clerk, are you there?
Me and mute him.
I am.
Oh, there he is.
Yes. It was it was to be upon um verification of the vote that they would take.
Right, as soon as as soon as the canvas is over. Um I think the election is November fourth, the canvas, I think, has twenty days to uh so it would be after the uh certification of the vote by the Wayne County Canvas Board.
Wouldn't uh who's going to be on there from the twenty days after till uh December thirty first?
That would be Abdul Zuhair Abdalhaq.
Okay, so he'll be there until to the end of the year, till December thirty first?
No, no, it's only twenty days after the actual election until they verify the vote. Zuhair Abdalhaq will cover until whoever wins the election can take over.
Madam Chair.
Uh Mr. Clerk?
Let me correct myself. I believe the appointment is to um the election is to um fill the unexpired term. So yes, it would be after the canvas.
Yeah, because it's the unexpired term. It it would start immediately after the canvas.
Councilman.
Chair.
Councilman Miyaki has his hand up.
Let me unmute him.
I got him.
Thank you. Yeah, the the charter says that for the unexpired term of office until his successor shall have been elected and qualified. So it'd be upon the qualification whether or not, you know, once things are done officially done. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, uh Councilman Bazzi, go ahead, please.
Well, first, I want to congratulate Mr. Zuhair Abdalhaq. But I also want to say that, you know, we have some great applicants. I want to thank all of the all the applicants for their interest and time they put into this. And uh and one of the reasons why I chose, you know, Mr. Zuhair Abdalhaq, one is because he's been attending our city council meetings for several years since I I know way before I took over on the council. And he's very familiar with our city matters and also our numbers. And in particular, he's very familiar with the ongoing issues regarding our city finances. That's one of the reasons why I voted for him. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Coniston.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Um so uh the the new treasurer will take it, the the new appointed treasurer will take office July the first?
No. Oh, yeah, that, yes. Mr. Abdalhaq will take over once Treasure Riley leaves until the next person is elected.
Counselor Miyaki is, do you want me to unmute him?
Go ahead, please.
Okay, go ahead.
I believe that Treasure Riley said that his resignation is effective June the twenty ninth. So then it would be June the thirtieth for Mr. Abdalhaq's uh appointment to be in effect.
Thank you.
What what about the the turnover, Madam Chair?
Councilman, please be recognized.
So Madam Chair, what about the turnover? Uh is is he going to be, what the what days would he report for us? So we can get turnover from Mr. Riley?
Treasure?
He can come in, he can come in tomorrow. He can come in every day between now and June twenty ninth. We start at eight o'clock and we've been working till one. And we'll we'll start getting the signature cards together and he can, you know, there's a lot to learn, you know, so uh we'll see you tomorrow morning.
Okay. Council, I'm sorry, um Mr. Abdalhaq?
I I really want to thank Jean. He's been a good friend for a long time and I have the most respect for him. And I appreciate that he's asking me to come in because that's what I was hoping, that he will allow me to come in and learn from him during this, you know, one month almost and a few days. Maybe that will make the transition smoother and better for all of us.
Thank you. Okay.
Councilman Abdullah.
Um Councilman Abdullah?
Madam Chair, uh first of all, I want to say congratulations to Mr. Abdalhaq. I wish you nothing but the best of luck and looking forward to working together. In in my particular voice, I was looking for hopefully some continuity because I knew that uh Robert Coniston was the only one that's on the ballot coming up. And I did not want to change tre- have three treasurers within a, you know, four, five, six month period. But with that being the case, democracy moves forward. And I'd like to congratulate you and looking forward to working with you, Mr. Abdalhaq. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Before we move on, I'm going to make a statement that I'm getting texts and I'm going to group text with the other council members. This is a violation of the open meetings act. You can't be texting each other on here. Any further texts I get, I will read aloud to the public. And in the future, no more texting between council members um during the meeting. It's an open, it's a violation of the electronic meeting um as it was written up by the governor.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to make a correction to what Councilman Abdullah said. All due respect, Mr. Coniston is not the only one on the ballot for treasurer, so that I just want that to be noted, please.
Apologize. Thank you. I'm I'm sorry, you're right. I should make a correction because you you did not want to be a part of this particular nomination. So I I stand corrected. I'm wrong. Thank you.
On the ballot, yeah. Two names, but the clerk can clarify that.
You're right. I'm sorry.
Thank you. At this time, let's move on to new business. This is business license renewal for Antonio's located at two six three five six Ford Road, Pierrier's located at six five six five North Telegraph, and Uncle Ray's located at two four five zero two Warren. And then the Z F W Post number nine nine seven three located at five three one two South Beach Daily.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to approve the the business license renewals as outlined in item thirteen A.
Support.
Support.
For my Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I had a question for our clerk. Uh on all of these, Mr. Clerk, in the past, we used to get the one where they would say if there's any late fees or anything like that. I just want to make sure for the ones that we don't have that on there for three out of the four, are they all up to date as far as water, taxes, et cetera, et cetera, as far as the city is concerned?
They are, Councilman.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Muscat, you had your hand up at one point. Did you have any questions?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay, at this time, I will open up to comments from council members. Um I'd like to
Did we vote on that, Madam Chair?
I'm sorry, yes, okay. All those in favor of the new businesses getting their licenses renewed?
Aye.
Say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. All the licenses passed. Okay, next item on the agenda is comment from council members. I'd like to start it off. I do have a question for the mayor. Let's unmute his phone. Are you there, mayor?
There he is. You got it?
No, go ahead.
Okay.
Mine isn't working for some reason.
Okay, I just clicked it. So, okay, I think he's
I have a question. Um have you advertised for the corporate council position yet? Or where are we at on that?
No, we're under uh uh the COVID, the governor extended her order, uh we are to maintain at home. I think we should have a committee meeting though, because I think there's a huge misunderstanding in regards to this whole process.
Okay, no problem. Um Councilman Muscat?
Just the, you know, uh my thoughts on uh the city. I I had a conversation and some emails that went along with Director McIntyre. And I have to apologize to him because in one of my emails, I put, there was no excuse. The meaning of that, Mr. McIntyre, was not excuse for your department or you. It was no excuse for the the homeowners letting their homes go as bad as it it is. The city is just a mess with tall weeds everywhere. I mean, uh people aren't cutting their lawns. And really, there's no excuse for no upkeep in the city. And I'm very disappointed that it looks as bad as it does. I mean, we just even had new sod laid along Beach Daily Road uh after they did some uh work there. And the new sod's all wheat wheat filled. D T E building looks horrible with all the paint peeled off of it. Wilson at one time was what was a a jewel of the city when you drove down it. Now it looks just doesn't look right. The city is just doesn't, hasn't looked right in the last few years. I'm very disappointed in people not having a little pride in where they live. And and I know uh Director McIntyre's hands are are tied right now with um with the situation at hand with the COVID. But I I do want to make that clear to Mr. McIntyre. When I said there was no excuse, it wasn't no excuse on your part. It was no excuse for the for the homeowners to let their homes go that way.
Councilman, I I'm your Director McIntyre, in case he had a comment to me.
Well, I appreciate you saying that. I I will tell you that I'm probably the most frustrated because I'm seeing the same things um all over the place, all over the city. Today alone, we issued two hundred and ninety-four grass and weed violations throughout the city, two hundred and ninety-four in one day. And um I'm, you know, and I explained to you of that first week alone, uh close to five hundred. We probably got thirty to fifty calls now, uh people asking us to give them extensions, you know. And uh I I I did tell a woman today, I said, ma'am, it's it's really just a matter of some gasoline and some and, you know, some labor, you know, physical labor. Uh I think people, I I I want to give people the benefit of the doubt. I think some people are in a slump. And I think there it's starting to have a a mental health effect on people. But we do need to clean things up. We do need to apologize about that. We do need to um we need to get on top of this stuff. And 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 we were, we were, we we started full time today, a very staggered schedule so that nobody's exposing each other. We're we're working fifteen minutes apart. Michelle's the only one in the office. They're spending their entire day out on the road. And uh, you know, I I I completely agree. I I I'm not quite sure um why we're starting to see this digression. And I you could, we could throw twenty more people into the ordinance department. And I think on some days, it still wouldn't be enough. So it's just constant. Now, we've got a lot of rain. We got a slow start. Grass will be going dormant in the next couple, probably in the next thirty days because of the heat. So we'll kind of catch up that way. But I do appreciate you mentioning that. And I know the officers do too. They're they're, they have never So we'll kinda catch up that way, but I do appreciate you mentioning that, and I know the officers do too, they're, they have never stopped. Nobody ever said they didn't want to come in during this time, and they all have young families, they're all very concerned about their health. And so we did it the best way possible so that we have the most, the least amount of exposure, but I know that they're gonna appreciate your words tonight, so thank you for saying that.
Council Chair, one more, I wasn't finished quite yet.
Okay.
I just wanna say thank you for, for, for understanding what I said. And if Mr. Gavin is on somewhere, I haven't driven by it the last couple of days, but right at Michigan and Gully, behind the gas station that's not being used anymore, there's an electrical pole that's ready to fall, I mean, literally ready to fall and take out the infrastructure there. So, I don't know if you're the person that would call DTE on it and have it checked out, because it is ready to fall. And I'm surprised nobody else has called on it, yeah.
I will make a note of it, is it behind, behind the building or alongside?
It's right in the alleyway. It's in the alleyway, it's, you know, of course, it's gonna be on the west side of the, the street, but it's just right behind a gas station there.
I will take a look at it, see if I can determine what type, what type of wire or line it is.
I think it's electrical, it's definitely electrical, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, I'm sure, thank you. Madam Chair?
Councilman Bazey, and then I got Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, then I got Councilman Wenzel, Councilman Abdullah.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have three questions, the first one is for the one, I know the bid went out, so we had one, I guess, two, two questions to that one. I know that there was a pre-bid meeting, but that was, I don't know if that was ever held or if they got both phoned. I guess that one is for Director Sellme.
Well, I can answer that, Director Sellme wasn't having a pre-bid meeting, I was. And that's tomorrow between 3:00 and 4:00. And I talked to, I think, all of the, or all the bidders, and I told them that if we couldn't do it in a Zoom form, because I'm having a difficult time setting that up, that I would just do a FaceTime with them so that they could ask me any questions about what's gonna be expected in terms of ordinance and that, so that's tomorrow between 3:00 and 4:00.
Thank you, so with that one for this question for Director Sellme, is, is DPW gonna be part of the bidders for that, for that one particular item?
Is that the Director Sellme?
Let me find, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'm not sure what you mean by the question, is the DPW gonna be part of the bidders?
Okay, so obviously, you sent, there was a, we sent it up for a bid to cut the grass, you know, for the city. So, is DPW also, are they gonna give us a proposal when the bids are, were presented to us to see what it would cost for DPW?
Yep, there's a, those are two separate bid packages, we separated them for, by design, so that way, because the bids that DPW is gonna receive is for city-owned property, and the bids that ordinance is gonna receive are for occupied property, so this way it'd be a little bit easier to make a decision. Their bids are due on the 27th, I'll evaluate them and I'll have a recommendation for the next council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Sellme. Second question, thank you, second question, I had a few residents, they actually asked me about the status of the city clerk's resignation that you made on, I believe it was May 13. City for the city clerk, can you please give us an update on the status, so when I do get a call, I can tell them exactly, or maybe they're watching this meeting?
In the past, Councilman, I've, I've asked it all the council people, referring phone calls concerning the clerk's office to the clerk, so that stands. I'm carefully considering my options in being able to perform the clerk's duties with consideration of my personal health and well-being. My decision will be based on my evaluation of this, so you can refer any questions to me as I have always asked the councilmen to do so in the past, thank you very much.
Thank you. Last question is, I got one of the residents, she's a disabled senior citizen, she owned a house, and I guess many, many years ago, over 50, maybe 20 years, maybe more, the city of Dearborn Heights used to offer loans to improve their homes or do some home improvement. So, I guess the city put some liens on some homes, the ones that they gave money to. But I was, I was being told, again, you know, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not, I'm not aware of this situation, this is the first I've ever heard of it. But they forgave some people, but some, they did not forgive on their, whatever loans, and again, I think that was about 20 years or so. Is, could somebody answer that question so I could call back the resident or the senior citizen that asked me that question?
Council Chair, wouldn't that have come from CDVG?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yeah, it would be Joe Hashem, Director Hashem, I believe, hold on a minute, can somebody please unmute?
Corporation Council?
Go ahead.
Yes, again.
Yes. In the past, as far as I know, and I think Director Hashem would need to end up addressing the issue. But in general, the city had given loans and they were liens on the property in order for them to be paid back. When the properties would end up being sold, the city would end up being paid back. I'm not sure what the current status is, he would be in a better position to address that, but it's not like these were just forgiven, as far as I know. He might have some idea of where we are now with, with that program. But in general, the idea was is that these loans were given with the idea that they would be repaid for everyone who was receiving that same sort of program or participating in it.
Okay, so with that, so on that note, if there's any homes that actually paid, where is the list that says which homes, I mean, obviously, that's money for the city. So where's the list that says which homes we give money to? Or which homes that we forgive, which homes, because I have not seen it, I mean, since I've been on the council, I have not seen anywhere that says that if anybody paid that amount.
If I may, my understanding is, is that these are, are basically the federal, the CBD BG funds. And I'm not sure that they would necessarily be things that would generally be in public record, but again, Director Hashem should address those, those issues.
I think we should let Director Hashem do it instead of speculating what it could, or could not be, that way, he knows exactly what the rules are, what he can disclose and not disclose. And I don't believe he's in here today, is he?
I didn't see him.
Okay, we do, I mean, I don't know if, if the mayor can direct him to answer the council, it is, I mean, it is our duty as a council, maybe not to the residents, at public. But I think that the council members needs to know, well, I know I need to know which homes or how many homes or what the amount of money, obviously, that's, that's revenue for the city or non-revenue if we, we forgive some loans to some homes. So for transparency, for transparency, we need to know that, I don't know if the mayor can direct the CDVG director to let us know.
Mayor, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Did you unmute me?
Yes.
Yeah, the CDBG program has very strict regulations as it relates to people getting loans, because there's a lot of, as my understanding is, and I don't have access to the loan payments, the loan amounts, I've been told that it is not eligible to release to me or any other elected official under the federal guidelines of the CDBG program. So I, I couldn't help you, I, I've had people come to me and want alterations and wanna do other things, and I have asked directly of HUD more than once, but the answer always is the same, that that's not your place, mayor, that is a program that, that the administrators know what the rules are. They have access to the information, and we ought to make sure that they do it correctly.
Okay, are you done, Councilman Bazey?
No, I guess I'll call the-
No, we're talking too long here, shorten it up, because we still have another meeting.
I'm just saying, I'll, I'll call the feds because I didn't get my, my answers.
Yeah, I called the feds.
Yeah, I'll ask them tomorrow, thank you, ma'am.
Ask them about your case too.
Okay, next we have Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Council Chair, I wanted to say, you know, I wanna thank the city employees, the administration, department heads, as we're working through the COVID-19, you know, it's very fluid, very challenging for everyone, but I did wanna ask the mayor, on the Wayne County, they have the weekly update calls, I know the mayor's on the call frequently. But there was discussion with the mobile testing units, they can come to different communities. I know Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib was able to assist with setting that up, as well as Carol Asterberry with Wayne County Health Department. My question is, with 489 positive tests in Dearborn Heights and 59 deaths, God rest those souls, are we going to bring mobile testing? Because I, there is also a news that concerns the second wave that we're seeing right now coming in our medical facilities. So my question is, are we going to offer mobile testing for residents here in Dearborn Heights? That was my first question, and I just have one more after that, Madam Chair.
Okay, did you want to-
Do you want me to respond?
Yeah, I have you unmuted, thank you.
Okay. The individual who I certainly would look to be having a mobile testing units in the city, questions have come up in regards to availability and where they would be located at. Wayne County, I don't think you necessarily have to have a unit in your particular community, because we're a very odd-shaped city. And if we can joint with Redford, with Taylor, or Dearborn, we can satisfy that just as well. So I have indicated to the health department that we would be supportive and work in conjunction with them in whatever makes the most sense in, in that regards.
What about, I'm sorry, follow-up, Garden City Hospital, because I know they're part of that big program, planning out with Wayne County and the new equipment that they just recently purchased for testing, they're relatively close to us.
Good point, I forgot about Garden City, and Garden City is, that would make a lot more sense. A lot of the communities that have them do have a major hospital located on-site, and so the coordination of that would be a lot easier. I had talked to the Beaumont people from the very beginning in regards to providing testing for Dearborn Heights people, and ran into, in fact, had conversations with Congresswoman Dingo about this. And at one time, it was very difficult to get even a policeman or a fireman tested over there. But things have changed, and it looks like the testing is, is much easier. The other concern I have is that in the city of Detroit, they're using the Abbott test. And the one thing that really concerns me and has come up in many seminars that I've been a part of, and that's the fact that the false positives and the false negatives, that test seems to have a very high rate of false testing. And, and so consequently, I had made, I walked away with the feeling that the Abbott test that they use in Detroit is probably not the one that we would wanna use.
Mr. Mayor, do you know when City Hall will be opening, because I know there has to be like a, an action plan with the educational outreach and testing for employees? Is there something that we're going to see the movement towards, and will you update us of that?
Yeah, I, almost every day, it seems like HR, myself, John Sellme, Chrissy, I still refer him as Chief Lee, but we are, we are talking and trying to come up with a proposal. The other thing we've done is all of us have been talking to our counterparts in Redford, Taylor, Canton, and other communities as we go to coordinate and get a best practices. I've, we have already established and have put on order thermometers, we've already talked about the limitation of people coming into City Hall. We've talked about, in fact, I'll have a memo going out tomorrow, because one of the things, I usually come in the afternoon and work at home in the morning. And I've had employees tell me that, "Mayor, you need to come in here in the morning, there's so many people not wearing masks." And masks are gonna be essential, distancing is gonna be essential for all employees, we're all gonna have our temperatures taken. And probably people as they come in, and in the same way that, on a couple occasions, I have been, I've been to, not because I was ill, but for pharmacy purposes. And right away, your temperature is taken when you enter Henry Ford Hospital or the Beaumont system, and you get a series of questions. And those, I, I could, we're looking at those type of things. We're also looking at severely limiting, and we've actually, if you've been in City Hall, there's more Plexiglas up than was there prior to the virus. And we are looking at the best practices, I think the one thing that, I've said this before, but both Ford Motor Company and General Motors have put on a website best practices that they're utilizing. And I think those are gonna be extremely helpful, while many of them are for factory, they are also dealing with office workers. And so those are things that we are looking at. Items that I'm still concerned about is cleaning. We don't know, at the end of the day, how much cleaning would be necessary in order to make the place safe for customers the following day and for the employees. And, and those are questions that we're still trying to deal with. We've also talked to a couple of companies who have expertise in the cleaning area, and I will tell you, it is not cheap. And I don't think we could afford that kind of fumigation on a, on a evening after evening basis. These are all serious concerns, I don't wanna come down with the virus, I wanna make sure that the environment is safe for all of us, all the employees, all the people that come in. Right now, though, under the governor's order, I can't see us opening up, and most of the other communities have said the same, I think she extended to June 12th. But we have, we have been spending a lot of time, we have bought certain things, we talked about having the police officer at the beginning of the entrance way in the City Hall. With the need for people to distance outside City Hall, if we get more than, let's say, a certain number, eight or 10, that we would allow in the building. So these are, life is gonna be extremely different, and as you're not meeting face-to-face with one another, I think there's gonna be a general movement that if you can do your business online by phone call and don't need to come in, in person to City Hall, it's gonna be beneficial for both that individual and all of us in City Hall.
The last thing I have, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, just real quick, if I may, this is the second to last point. More of a statement for the mayor and the administration, in particular zoning commission. The Wayne County called the talk of discussion of outdoor dining to support getting our businesses open while allowing for social distancing. I know Assad Turfi and Khalil Rahal had mentioned that today is a big movement they're working on, and wanted to see if our zoning commission was taking that into consideration, but that does require zoning changes.
Thank you. Next we have Councilman Wenzel, do you still have a comment? Oh, can somebody please unmute Councilwoman Wenzel?
Council? Okay, there we go, well, first of all, it sounds like there's a lot of planning been going on about opening City Hall, and this is the first I've heard about any of these, I'm sure most of us say the same. It'd be nice to be informed as council members, what plans are being talked about, in case we're asked, instead of being left in the dark on that. Next, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Abdul Haq for his appointment. And I'd like to let everyone know that the Warren Valley Golf Course is open for business, for golfing, for carts. And I'd spend some time on the flooded areas over there and Prairie Hanover area, spoke with lots of residents last few days. And they, they're wondering what's going on, just because it's not flooding anymore, it's put on the back burner, they want update, updates, not every six months, but weekly would be nice for the residents and the city council members. And that goes in conjunction with the Van Born Coroner also, I mean, we need to stay on top of both of these things, especially the flooding, that's an issue that you can't, just because of floods, you talk about it- That's an issue that uh, you can't, just because of floods, you talk about it and the next week, you don't hear anything about it. We need to stay on top of this. We need updates on, on the, the plans going forward um, with the Army Corps of Engineers and Wayne County, everybody involved. I don't know anything. I haven't heard one thing in the last couple of months about what, what we're doing about flooding. Thank you. Oh, one more thing is uh, the one more thing is the DTE issue with the power surges, is, is anything happening with that? I don't know who would, who would adjust about that question. Because yeah, like, I know Matt, several council members probably get emails about the power surges going on in Dearborn Heights.
I would, I would think that's DTE's job. And if you're not getting satisfactory results, make a complaint with the Michigan Public Service Commission.
All right, all right, thank you.
That happens. They seem to move quicker. Now, we're going to move on to Councilman Abdullah. We've got to get going here, everybody.
Ma'am Chair, just very quickly for the, because of the time, I'd just like to congratulate uh, our uh, now-retired uh, chief, Michael Petrie. I'd like to thank him for serving our community for the last thirty-two, thirty-four, thirty-five years, give or take. And he's done a great job while chief. And I'm also looking for, I'd like to congratulate our new chief, Mark Myers. I'm really looking forward to working with him. I think he'll do just as good of a job as a lot of the other chiefs have done. And wish both of them nothing but the best of luck and uh, thank you both for serving again. And just, you know, just, I know it just passed yesterday, but uh, blessed Memorial Day for everybody that served in our armed forces. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Constance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I too want to congratulate uh, our chief, Mike Petrie, for a job well done. And uh, incoming chief, Mark Myers. Uh, we had a tour of the uh, Dearborn Heights Dispatch Center and the Dearborn uh, Dispatch Center uh, helped arrange by um, Councilwoman, Dearborn Councilwoman Leslie Herrick and our, our councilman, Dave Abdullah. And uh, it, it was very interesting and I was very impressed with uh, Mark Myers. And uh, he explained that he has a uh, Masters in Business Administration. Gave us a tour of the uh, police station and a lot of the things he is doing. Also regarding testing, um, there are a lot of locations that can do uh, testing for the coronavirus. I went to the CVS testing online, Henry Ford Centennial Library. Uh, this was several weeks ago. And you stay in your car, I, I, I did the test, it tested negative. I understand that access is also doing the testing. And there are some locations now that are going to be doing the antibody testing. And then also regarding uh, any zoning changes for our restaurants. I, I look forward to seeing our, our restaurants and other businesses getting back open and back to work. I really look forward to um, uh, uh, vaccine uh, coming out. There's a vaccine that's being tested on individuals that shows a lot of promise. And seeing our, our business community get back up and running and back to normal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, at this time, I'm going to open it up to public announcements. Um, Mr. McCaffrey has announced that he's told me. This, this is for community announcements. It's not the public yet. I would get this, so, okay, here are the announcements. We have our librarian, um, Michael McCaffrey.
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. I just wanted to touch on a couple of upcoming programs. Via Zoom, Tuesday, June ninth at seven PM, pop culture historian Greg Turner for a presentation about the glorious covers of the great paperback books that dominated the mid to late twentieth century. Turner will focus on the artists who drew these covers, such as Robert McGuire, Robert McGinnis, and Ron Lesser. Go to our website at dhcl.mishlibrary.org or you can just Google Dearborn Heights Libraries for the link, probably easier way. Also starting this Friday, May twenty-ninth, signup will be starting for the 2020 Summer Reading Program. Join us as we do fun activities and crafts from home as you run a virtual summer reading program. Uh, comic book art interviews and much more coming this summer. Uh, participation kits will be sent uh, to homes. Uh, the signup link will be on our page at dhcl.mishlibrary.org. Or again, you can just Google Dearborn Heights Libraries. It should be the first thing that comes up. Uh, that's all for now. Uh, thanks for your time, man. See you at the library soon.
Um, we have Michael Petrie. Did you still have a?
We lost him.
Shoot. Somebody unmute me? Go ahead.
Oh, darn it.
I think too many people are unmuted here. Go ahead, Council Secretary, you be the one to unmute him.
Okay.
Okay, Michael.
Can you hear him now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Yeah, I just want to invite uh, you know, all the public and uh, council and, you know, everybody that uh, interacts with our city of Dearborn Heights to check out our Facebook, uh, Police Department Facebook page or the city's uh, webs, uh, webpage. And uh, Mark Myers was sworn in as the next chief, chief of police today. Um, it wasn't uh, the typical swearing-in that we like to do. And we obviously all know that the COVID virus has caused all this. Uh, we had to limit the member, number of people that we're in just because of social distancing and so forth. But uh, I would invite you all to please check it out. Uh, Mark's going to be an excellent addition uh, to the department heads in the city. And I think he's going to do a great job. And uh, um, please check it out and uh, I wish the best of luck to him.
Thank you. Okay, is there any more community announcements at this time? The admin's helping to make sure anybody's.
I don't see anything.
Chief Myers.
Wait a minute, Chief Myers is up.
Chief Myers should be unmuted. I unmuted him a while ago.
Yep, thank you. Um, I just, unfortunately, I appreciate everybody's thank you. I, I look forward to doing a great job. Please check out the Facebook page. But uh, I really want to uh, extend this time to thank Chief Petrie. Chief Petrie's worked here since nineteen eighty-six, since he was nineteen years old. Um, he's made Dearborn Heights his lifelong employment, his lifelong commitment. Um, he's very proud of what he's done. I hope everybody understands the sacrifices he's made over the last three decades working for the city. And uh, I look forward to what the future brings for him. He's going to grow up and get a real job now. And uh, he'll continue to teach and um, I wish him the best of luck. And I work, look forward to working with everyone. And I, I hope to see everybody soon in person. And uh, thank you very much. But yeah, congratulations, Mike.
Thank you. Is there any more community announcements at this time? Okay, at this time, I will open it up to the public. Um, you have a two-minute limit. I have Chuck Barnes. Let me unmute you here. My keys aren't working. Um.
You want me to do it?
So, please, okay.
I'm unmuted.
Oh, no, he's good. He's there. He's there.
Go ahead, please.
All right, I'm uh, disappointed in the board or the council's action today in appointing the treasurer. Um, I don't think it's fair for a lot of folks out there. You um, had, people had to turn in their signatures to run for the office. Um, it was extended under uh, I believe it was a court order to May eighth. And by your own admission today, um, the treasurer Riley had not even submitted his, his uh, retirement yet. I don't know how you can cut people off, give them a May fifth uh, deadline to sign up for a position that's not even vacant. I think that's, you know, I don't know if it's pre-planned or what the, the motivation of the council is. But I don't know how you can um, look for a, tell people they have to have signatures in for an elected position that's not even open. You know, so forth. We, we've also have a clerk out there who said that he's going to resign. Now he's not going to, or, or he'll, he'll talk about anybody about it. And when is the deadline for those folks to get on the ballot? It's uh, you know, by your own admission today, um, you're asking for when did, when is John submitting his paper for retirement? So I don't understand how a council can legally fill a position when you don't even have the elected official has not even resigned. That, that's my comment and it's shameful, your actions today.
Well, I, like it was stated in the letter, it is upon his pending retirement, which we already know about. It should have already happened, Treasurer Riley. Would you like to weigh in on that?
I, I guess, I, I guess, as the council knows, I, I have, I have turned in my resignation from the elected treasurer. I'm currently serving as an appointed treasurer. And so my, my resignation as the elected treasurer has been accepted by this council. And that's what caused the election to occur this November. At least that's my understanding of it.
Somebody please unmute, um, for the council, Mr. Miyake.
Okay, should be ready.
The election is based on the resignation of Treasurer Riley that was accepted in December. That caused the resignation. Treasurer Riley now is resigning as a temporary appointment uh, from the period of May the first through November. And because he is resigning, going to resign from that position, this appointment is taking place. So there was already a vacancy that was created by virtue of the acceptance of the resignation back in December of twenty nineteen. That's what the election concerns, as Treasurer Riley stated.
Okay, thank you very much. Does that help, Mr. Barnes?
No, it doesn't. I, I think it was, it's a fix and, and it's not, not right that uh, with the whole virus thing and how um, I missed out the opportunity of getting signatures. But good luck to John. He's done a great job. And then good luck to the city council when you got to flip. And then you got to pay John to come back in and teach the, the person who wins the election next November, how to run the office. Because the gentleman you appointed today, I don't think has the qualifications for the position, number one. And number two, in a short period of time that John's going to be there to, to teach him, he's not going to be up to speed to go ahead and hand him the ton uh, next, uh, November, December to the treasurer who's elected to fill that term.
Thanks very much. Okay, is there any more public comment? Oh, I'm sorry, Treasurer Riley, I got to unmute you now.
Get him.
Go ahead, Treasurer Riley.
He's muted.
Oops.
We're waiting to unmute. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Well, uh, I am pleased to say that while we were having our meeting, we did, I did receive an email from Wayne County that the tax revolving fund will be paid out on time. So that's good news. I think the treasurer's office at Wayne County is um, sensitive to the community's needs and cash flow. Uh, probably there are communities more in need of cash flow than Dearborn Heights. But it was good to receive that memo, so we did have good news there. And so I'll just leave it with that. That came in at seven forty-eight.
Okay, thank you. That's great news. Okay, is there any other public comment at this time? You have two minutes? Council secretary, do you see anybody?
I'm looking on the second page. I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, at this time, we have our closed session coming up. This is with Chief Petrie for strategy, strategy session for collective bargaining purposes. We will be leaving.
We, we got a couple people, Chair.
I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. Miyake.
It's too late. We're already done. Um, this is for the closed study session for collective bargaining purposes. Um, do I have someone that would like to move into closed study sessions?
You need, oh, wait a minute, he's there, muted. Let me unmute them.
Councilman Bazey?
I'll make the motion to move, move into a closed session.
Support.
Support by Councilman Constance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we will leave in the meeting temporarily to go to a closed meeting. And then we will come back for an adjournment.
Madam, Madam Chair.
The uh, the uh, motion to go in a closed session does take a roll call vote, please.
Roll call.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, one by one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. All right, Councilman Bazey?
Yes.
Councilman Abdullah?
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel?
Where is he?
Well, let's go on. Councilman Wenzel is asked it. Um, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yes.
Councilman Muscat?
Yes.
Melanowski Manswell? Yes. Okay, well.
Cover Constance too.
I know, I'm, I'm calling him, please. Councilman Constance?
Yes.
Okay, we are moving to go into a closed study session.